Evening, everyone. Let's call this meeting to order. This is the City of Frankfurt Board of Commissioners Voting Meeting. Today is February 27th. And we'll begin tonight with an invocation from Father Peter Gotama from the Church of the Ascension. Welcome, Father.
Thank you. Let's bring. Now, to give you thanks to the young people here tonight, may they inspire us and fill us with a spirit of the best that we can be. Please strengthen them during these confusing and crazy and wonderful times. Please bless this meeting and all who are here tonight. May wise decisions be made for the welfare of all. Amen.
Thank you. I'm going to pledge allegiance to Barbara Stanton.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I ask our clerk to call for the role.
Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Unger.
Present.
Commissioner Waldrich.
Present.
Commissioner May.
Present.
Mayor Wilkerson.
Present. And we do have a call. And we'll start with ceremonial recognition. And I'd like to turn it over to Commissioner Waldrich. We have special guests tonight that we've invited.
Um, we can go ahead and do yours. Do you want to do ours first? Okay.
Listen.
Sure. Would you like to introduce the KSU ensemble and say a little bit about you guys? And then we'll start off with, lift every voice.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Daniel Whitworth. I'm assistant professor at Lowgrass University. And here we have Lowgrass Ensemble plus an Alzo Texas Ensemble. These are our music majors. They've come to perform a little bit for you. We do hope that you enjoy and come see us in the future.
Stand. Before we do one more, I'll do a proclamation. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And tonight, we have a special guest. We want to honor one of our local businesses. And this is something that we want to do more of as a commission is support our local businesses and, and, and show them our support with a proclamation. And tonight, we have special guest Jordan Smith Willis. He's the owner of I Am Barber Shop, I Am Barber Shop, which is over on Bridge Street. And before I call you up, we'll, we'll come over and let me read this real quick, if you don't mind, and we can come up. City of Frankfurt proclamation. Whereas Jordan Smith Willis has been in the barber industry for 10 years and has always dreamed of opening his own shop in downtown Frankfurt. He is focused on the youth and getting them involved with the community and is determined to show them that you can be you, open a business, and be a successful person in your hometown. And whereas Jordan believes there is no community without unity, so his barber shop is a place for people to come to feel comfortable in their skin, no matter who that is. Jordan continues learning, teaching, and helping people find their best self, which is why he named the barber shop, I Am Barber Shop. It's not just a barber shop, it's a meeting spot to build character. And whereas Jordan is the first person in his family to own a business, and his family is everything, they taught him to give and to be a role model. He is thankful and he has much respect for his granny, Sherian Smith, and mom Anne Smith, for having the biggest hearts and they're constantly giving. He is a dedicated father to his two sons, Dakari McMullen and Milo Smith Willis, as they are his constant reminder of why he is who he is in the community. Also, his wife Katima Smith Willis, who has been right there since the beginning, and his godfather Troy Wilson, who has stepped up and been a mentor, father figure, and has helped Jordan start every idea he has had. And whereas Jordan firmly believes without his family, he wouldn't be where he is today. He's an amazing man, always giving, humble, and dedicated to making Frankfurt a better place. The Frankfurt community appreciates Jordan, his family, and his business, and that continues to grow within downtown. Therefore, I, Lane Wilkerson, mayor of the City of Frankfurt, do hereby proclaim February 27th as Jordan Smith Willis Day in the City of Frankfurt. Congratulations. [applause]
Mayor, I'd just like to add, congratulations, Jordan. He has moved closer to City Hall in his new location, if everyone does not know where his location is. They're on Bridge Street, across from Rick's White House. And I just want to say thank you, as my son was young and used to go to Jordan's spot when he was down on another location, and he's very fond of Jordan, and he still has the rock that you gave him and the lesson that he had in regards to the stone. He kept wanting your best stones, but you finally found one for him. And he still has that rock to this day, and he appreciates you, you know, taking that time to teach a lesson about gems and about stones in that interest. So not only, like the mayor shared, it's about hair, but it's about learning and paying attention to the kids. He always talked to my son when he went in, so I've always appreciated that, and so does he, so.
Thank you very much.
Yes. And Mayor, one other thing.
Yes.
Oh, sorry. And there's son Milo down there. Hey, Milo, he's becoming a regular here in City Hall. And so, he and I had a conversation earlier with his mother on not to touch plugs. So we're going to ask that we get some baby proofing in here for Milo. In his honor, we would like to see if we can try to get baby plugs to cover up these, if we could, by the next meeting for Milo, to keep him and everyone else safe, so.
City manager.
I just want also to say, and thank you, Jordan. I know how much you give to the community. You provide free haircuts to the residents over at Access and to others. I've seen you at multiple fairs, helping everybody out, and just, you're a role model to many other businesses, giving so much to the community. So just really want to say thank you.
Most appreciated.
I should point out, this is, you did it. He cut my hair. Any other? You want to, well, Commissioner May.
I just want to say, in addition to, I've gotten to know Jordan quite a bit over the past few years, and spent a lot of time during COVID, when we were all downtown and during lockdown, and where we could and couldn't go. We had the opportunity to cross paths, and you were there for a lot, for some, just conversations. And I think that's what's beautiful about business that you do, is it's an opportunity to take a moment to stop. You, you can't move if you're getting your haircut, and you're forced to deal with some things, and things come up naturally. So it's more than a haircut. You are providing an amazing service to people, and when it's time, I'll, I'll come see you.
[laughter]
Yeah, but, again, much appreciated. Thank you.
Most appreciated, all y'all in the community as well, and you, I'm a source of that big, 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 big man right here, and, you know, stand right here. So, it's just, like I said, there is no community without unity, and it's just about us coming together and coming up with the new ideas for the youth and just, you know, keep progression. So people want to stay, stick around in Frankfurt and open up shops or businesses or, you know, whatever it is that they want to do. You can be successful right here if you want to be. It's just what you make it, so appreciate that, y'all.
Good work.
Yeah.
She's grabbing Milo.
Are we going to do one more song?
Yeah, we have one more song by Kentucky State.
[music]
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 [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music]
I should point out, this is, you did it. He cut my hair. Any other? You want to, well, Commissioner May.
I just want to say, in addition to, I've gotten to know Jordan quite a bit over the past few years, and spent a lot of time during COVID, when we were all downtown, and during lockdown, and where we could and couldn't go. We had the opportunity to cross paths, and you were there for a lot, for some, just conversations. And I think that's what's beautiful about business that you do, is it's an opportunity to take a moment to stop. You, you can't move if you're getting your haircut, and you're forced to deal with some things, and things come up naturally. So it's more than a haircut. You are providing an amazing service to people, and when it's time, I'll, I'll come see you.
[laughter]
[laughter]
Yeah, but, again, much appreciated. Thank you.
Most appreciated, all y'all in the community as well, and you, I'm a source of that big, 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 big man right here, and, you know, stand right here. So, it's just, like I said, there is no community without unity, and it's just about us coming together and coming up with the new ideas for the youth and just, you know, keep progression. So people want to stay, stick around in Frankfurt and open up shops or businesses or, you know, whatever it is that they want to do. You can be successful right here if you want to be. It's just what you make it, so appreciate that, y'all.
Good work.
Yeah.
She's grabbing Milo.
Are we going to do one more song?
Yeah, we have one more song by Kentucky State.
[music]
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 Are we going to do one more song?
Yeah, we have one more song by Kentucky State.
[music]
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 [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [music] [applause] 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 [music] [applause]
We'll take a little bit, thank you. We'll get this out of town, please.
Jordan, would you, would you like to come forward and take pictures?
We'll move on to start. Citizens comments. We have a few here tonight. Thank you for coming. We'll start with Rachel Peak. And I ask you to come to the podium and speak into the mic, and you have five minutes. Just state your name and who you're with, if with someone, and do you have any guests with you?
I do. I have a couple guests here with me. I have Noah Campbell, I have Malachi Critchfield, and I have Kate and Todd. Would you like to just stand with me?
And who else do you have?
And my name is Rachel Peak. Mayor and Commissioners, we are...
We'll move this over, Rachel.
We may have to... Okay.
I'm going to make sure we get you on camera.
Yes. Thanks, Bobby.
Good evening. The song Ribbons in the Sky was very appropriate because we came to talk to you about ribbons in the sky, which we don't often see in Frankfurt. Now, we're going to be talking to you tonight about light pollution. I've brought students from Elkhorn Middle School, and also several members of the Frankfurt Audubon Society are here tonight, and I represent the International Dark Sky Association. I'm a science teacher at Elkhorn Middle School. We are here tonight recognizing the importance of connections between all systems in the universe. People are connected to land and also connected to the skies. Through observations of light in our studies in school and wondering about our night skies, we recognize that the Milky Way is not visible in Frankfurt. At night, we have too many lights inside buildings in Frankfurt, and we are creating our own sky glow. Many of our buildings are lit up for no apparent reason. We let lights such as streetlights, porch lights, office lights burn all night. It is like a halo of light around our city, which impacts our view of the sky.
These lights created by the outside and inside buildings, clinically known as artificial light at night, or just Allen. Light pollution is defined as any adverse effect on art, any adverse effect of artificial light at night. It comes in three main forms: sky glow, glare, light, and light trespass. Sky glow is the brightening of the night sky of cities. Glare is too much brightness. Light passes, light falling where it is not needed or wanted. Globally, we are seeing a 9.6 increase in light pollution every year. At this rate, our night sky brightness will be doubled every eight years. It's estimated that 83% of the global population lives under a light polluted sky, and have never seen the Milky Way.
Outdoor lighting disturbs wildlife, causing birds, bats, and most insects to be attracted to the light. They are genetically programmed by evolution to fly toward bright light. Birds also migrate using star and sky navigation. When birds are confronted by large brightly lit skylines of urban areas, they become disoriented. Not only are they attracted to the light pollution of the city, but sky glow obscures their view of the night sky, which they use to find their direction. Birds will fly toward the light, and if they don't immediately collide with the building, they are reluctant to, to leave the lit area and return to dark, to the dark. They may fly round in circles until they drop to the ground with exhaustion.
There is data that estimates up to 1 billion birds die from collisions with buildings because of night, light pollution in North America each year. Insects are already in trouble. In recent decades, the biomass of offlying insects has, by some measured, decreased by close to 75%. Not only do lights create sky glow, it is a type of pollution that's a waste of money and energy. About 35% of lighting worldwide is wasted light, shooting straight up into the sky. We spend around $4.5 billion, USA alone, a year on wasted light, while adding 21 million tons of carbon dioxide to the atmosphere each year. This is equivalent to at least 1% of world emissions of greenhouse gases. Humans are also affected by light pollution, and there are thousands of research articles to support our claim. Artificial light at night has been linked with an increased risk for all types of cancer. The addition of artificial light disrupts our natural circadian rhythm, or our internal clock. Our rhythm is regulated by the hormone melatonin. This disruption causes depression and obesity because low leptin levels result from breaking down the melatonin cycle.
One minute.
Mayor, Commissioners, we, in our city, we are a leader, and we, in many ways, as a capital city, can be at the forefront, making positive changes. Light pollution is fortunately one of the easiest types of pollution and environmental problems to solve, and we're asking the mayor and the commissioners for your help. We would ask, like to ask you for a proclamation for the week of April 15 through the 22nd as Lights Out Week. This week coincides with a heavy bird migration period and Earth Day. During this week, we will promote the use of smart lighting that directs light where it is needed and creates a balance between safety and starlight. We will be promoting ideas such as simply turning off lights in buildings at night, and asking residents to look at lighting around their properties for inefficient, poorly designed, or unnecessarily, unnecessarily light. Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter, and we will hope you consider our request.
Thank you.
Is that it?
That was perfect timing. Any, any questions or discussions with Ms. Peak and her student?
Thank you so much for coming. We love to see the students come forward. This is your community, and hearing your voice as well, and implementing this in your science class there, and coming to visit us here. So speaks really loudly on what you guys do in your classroom, and what you, and for the world for it to be here when you get older. And I would like for us to look at granting this proclamation, Mayor, in the upcoming months of whenever, right before April. And so I'd ask that, yeah, I'd ask that we get more information.
Yes, we will be following up with you and trying to figure out a process. We have some letters for you, and so look for, look for those.
That'd be great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here. I want to say I did, I have received and looked at a few ordinances that we could discuss potentially for the future, so thank you so much, and it's great to see your students here. Thank you for all you do.
Those on streetlights, too?
Yeah.
Yeah, those purple ones.
Thank you all for coming.
[music]
Ann Marie Rose.
[music]
And welcome back.
Thank you.
Good to see you again.
It's good to be here. I'm also interested in dark skies, and I look at it from a cultural and historical standpoint of all the civilizations, including the Greeks, that looked up at the skies and saw things and drew conclusions. And we now, in the modern age, can look up and see maybe four or five scars, and that's it. So we've lost some of that inspiration from nature, that I think there are solutions. The Dark Sky Society that Rachel mentioned is very helpful in looking into things, but I think there's specific things the city could do, would be, to be what Lisa mentioned of studying an ordinance that would recommend light fixtures that keep the light down on the street where we want it for safety, but not up in the air where it's, it's not helping animal life or, or human life. And I also think it would be helpful for the city to ask the state, perhaps, to turn off the lights in their office buildings that are on all night for no apparent reason. And the same thing goes for Kentucky State University, especially their new dormitory, where every single light is left on. And city schools and county schools are also, could use some helpful encouragement towards turning off lights. And in all of these cases, it would be a cost savings as well as an improvement to the environment. So I would request that. And, and then the type of street lighting, it appears that what industry has put forth with LED lighting is more in the blue spectrum, closer to daylight conditions, which is what's confusing wildlife, as well as just having more lighting. And to look at what Dark Skies Association, the Audubon Society, Sierra Club are all saying, get warmer lighting, stay with the warmer sections of that, and to look into that as well as additional help. So, thank you, and...
Thank you.
See what we can do.
Well, I think the, next, Chris Clare.
Thank you. I'm Chris Clare. I live in South Frankfurt. I'm a good news guy tonight. Unfamiliar role. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. Although I serve on both the Forestry Advisory Board and the Board of the Access Soup Kitchen and Men's Shelter, I don't come here representing any organization. I come here tonight as a citizen, a resident of Frankfurt for eight years, and seven city managers, including several interim, one co-interim, and one who never actually served. I know to some, eight years isn't long enough to have a valuable opinion on local matters. I don't know how long is considered long enough to graduate from, he's not from around here, nor do I much care. I'm from here now. But I have lived other places, and I've seen some things. However, few places I've lived, and none of the smaller towns, can claim a strategic plan, such as the one mentioned in the State Journal last week. And so I'm here tonight to compliment you all, and the city staff, and to give credit where it's due. People like to complain, a lot, so I thought I would say tonight that this seems to be the most optimistic time for Frankfurt since we moved here. We have a new Second Street, we have new restaurants and businesses downtown, we have a growing tourism industry. We're seeing homes and commercial buildings renovated and used. Looking ahead, Frankfurt is on the cusp of a massive redevelopment downtown, something that could change the face of the city forever and boost downtown in a way that it hasn't been since they dug up the streetcars and tore up the crawl. The opportunity to fill this hole is one that cities get only rarely, usually when some unspeakable disaster creates the hole. We're also in the midst of evaluating the comprehensive plan, preparing to handle bourbon and other tourism, reimagining the Home Street corridor, recruiting remote workers, replacing tax revenue lost due to changes in work habits, and reopening a river link between downtown and the west side. It wasn't that long ago that this commission, not this commission specifically, but, was consumed by rancor and recalcitrance that regularly spilled into the open. We were changing city managers seemingly with the seasons. To quote a State Journal editorial from August 2020, "Who would want to take a job with an average longevity of maybe two years? Think about the message that sends, not just to prospective city managers, but to potential investors interested in our area." I remember Tim Zisoff, and Cindy Steinhauser, and Keith Parker, and Tommy Russell, and now City Manager Hague. Of course, I know her as Laura Hague, because I'm fortunate enough to count her as my friend, but here I'll refer to the title, I'll refer to her by the title she's earned. Fortunately, Frankfurt leaders today seem to have come to their senses and realize that stability builds on itself and breeds opportunity. In addition to having a relatively efficient and functional city commission led by Mayor Wilkerson, with good ideas, vision, and energy, we have a city staff led by City Manager Hague that is working so efficiently, you never hear about them. Now, it may sound strange to hear that, but think about it. When are people most vocal? When something's wrong, when things aren't working. Now, to be fair, not everything is sunshine and roses here all the time, but we can't expect it to be. Overall, the good is outpacing the bad in many ways in Frankfurt, and that hasn't always been the case. When we told people we were moving here, some people we knew were skeptical, but friends who visit us came away amazed. More than once, visitors have said, "We understand now why you moved here." One friend from Oregon moved here after a single visit. His wife, who said she would stay for a year, now says she won't leave. The correlation between staff stability and satisfaction, fresh ideas and energy from elected officials, and all the good that seems to be happening in Frankfurt is one, which is to say, they are directly correlated. And while there are still forces insistent on digging in their heels against change, or rising to complain or oppose new ideas and new ways in order to advance their own agendas, those voices are hopefully fading, and their influence waning. You have the tools and the people in place now to capitalize on a bright future. You have the right leaders, in the right places, at the right time, and given all that's happened in recent years, I think you're quite fortunate to be in this position. I urge you to keep at it, stay the course, keep driving, keep reaching for opportunity, and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
[applause]
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 Thank you. Any comments about that? Yes, Commissioner Unger.
It's not every day you hear the positive comments, like you said, so thank you so much. And thanks for.
All the encouragement we can get. Thank you. And Jeanette Walker, would you want to speak? Come forward.
Anybody who wants to speak?
Welcome. Good to have you here.
I'm Chris Paul Carter. So that's the new commissioners. As he said, I have been through many commissioners, many mayors. I'm not that old, but I can remember when. I'm here on Green Hill, behalf of Green Hill Cemetery. I am the chairperson, Mr. John Freddie Joe Johnson's co-chair. And I just want to tell you all through all the city commissioners and all the mayors, y'all have done things, y'all have helped us so much to keep the cemetery where it is. This, what we are voting, what you all need to vote on would be so much, is so much needed for the cemetery to put the cemetery a hundred and thirty percent where we should be. You all, today I just left the cemetery with a family, doesn't live in Frankfurt, but the young girl wanted to be buried with her dad. Now, people drove two and a half hours and coming back when she's to bury. Green Hill Cemetery is important to a lot of people, just not here in Frankfurt on the outside. I have people calling me, I had one lady call me from New Jersey looking for her mother. The cemetery upkeep is so expensive that we can't keep doing things that we do. This grant will help us if y'all pass it tonight to get a little bit farther where we need to be. The cemetery is going to be here when we gone. We got to think about the next generation like Ms. Margaret Shanti. She done so much things for us that we can sit back and say, "Thank you for doing what you did." And she worked with a many city commissioners and mayors to get what she had got done. So we want to leave some behind for the next generation for they to do, take on from where we left off. This will help us so much to be on the national, you know, where we need to be. So without you all voting yes, y'all need to vote yes to get what we need. Remember, yes is the right, no is wrong. So y'all got to go to bed tonight and y'all gonna hear my voice. So I just want to say, please, please think about the history of Green Hill Cemetery and do long work.
May I, may I ask because I have a feeling you know the long history. Could you give us?
I'm not that old.
I know you've read it all. So could you give us a brief history of Green Hill Cemetery and the area of Green Hill?
Well, Green Hill was, I was told, was part of Prince Hall before they built Prince Hall. And it was the road, they had to put a road between there. I don't know, a lot of people don't know, the Potterfield is at Green Hill. There's a lot of unknown graves there where people couldn't afford to bury their loved ones. They had to bury them there. We have slaves at Green Hill. Green Hill has a lot of history. It's just a community cemetery. We're not fancy like the other cemetery because we can't afford to be fancy. But it's a lot of history in Green Hill that I still don't know, that I still learn.
One of the things that I always found fascinating was that Green Hill kept its historical nature and preserved that even if the community itself overlooked it as we drove by. It is, it has a, it does have a very long history that needs to be studied, not just by everyone around the country, but our own students and our own citizens.
And I wish more people would come. And then sometime I ride by and I go, I see somebody there, I see somebody from Wisconsin. Well, he gave me some history. Did you all know that, say hundreds of years ago, there was men that was buried up there? They got hung and they was buried in a ditch, just in a hole. And we have the information, well, he's supposed to be sending the information, but he gave me history. He said the cemetery has a lot of history that we don't know about that happened before our time. It was just an empty lot. They went up there and hung them and just threw them in the grave, in the ground. So there's a lot of history at the cemetery. You're right that we still don't know that's there. And when we found the, her name was Sarah, we found a headstone that said Sarah was owned by a slave. And it was over 200 years old, and that headstone was still there. So like I said, there's a lot of history we still don't know about. And I wish that we, hopefully that we have all the documentation for we could pass it on to the next generation. I'm trying to get other younger people to realize this is a very important cemetery. Y'all may not think it is, but it's important to the community and all over the state.
Thank you for all that you do for.
Thank you. And I just remember, yes is right.
Yes is the only way.
We'll consider it here in a minute to help with the National Register nominee.
The nation, we need it badly, like we need money badly.
Thank you.
Much as he's been coming.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
And did I miss anyone that was here? I don't think so. I think that was it for citizens' comments. All right, we'll move on to consent calendar. Turn it over to the last student.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number one, the minutes from the work session, January ninth, 2023, and the regular meeting on January 23rd, 2023. Item number two, staff is seeking approval of a contract extension with Fusaco to provide liquid alum to the city of Frankfurt Sewer Department. This is a requirement to make sure that we do not exceed our discharge limits and our permits. Total cost is $200,000. Item number three, staff is requesting approval for the annual mission communications invoice and for mayor to sign all related documents. The sewer department has been using mission communications since 2006 to monitor the pump stations throughout the department's service area. Total cost that is budgeted is $31,725. Item number four, staff is seeking approval for amendment number two to the professional services contract with GRW for the design of the Prevention Park Pump Station consolidation project. Staff recommends installing parallel force mains during this project rather than construction of a second force main later. This will provide long-term cost savings and allow our sewer department to accept flow for future development. This project is in the capital improvement plan. The total budget is $310,280 for this design. And just want to emphasize how important this is because the initial design was only to allow flow for about 10 years. And this will allow additional flow and capacity for 30 to 40 years to design for future development. So important as a priority in our strategic plan and economic development. Item number five, staff is requesting authorization to apply for a certified local government grant in the amount of $12,000 to hire a professional consultant or consulting firm to develop a National Register nomination for the Green Hill Cemetery. This will require a cash match from the city of $8,000. And as Jeanette Walker has said, this effort is very important and timely given that we have recently learned that there'll be grant applications specifically geared toward African-American cemeteries from the National Park Service. And those will be, I think you can apply for them at the end of the year. So this is really important to get Green Hill on the National Register of Historic Places, put us in a better position to apply for these additional funds. I want to thank Vicky Behrenberg, our Historic Preservation Officer, and Ella Haskin Wagner, our Historic Science Supervisor for working closely with Green Hill. And appreciate seeing Freddie Johnson here because I really enjoyed your talk last Thursday. And appreciate that all of you all are working together. So this is really exciting. It's long overdue.
And she said yes. She said to say yes.
Just awesome to let you know that previously the Board of Commissioners approved $25,000 as a one-time expenditure towards implementation of the African-American context report that was published last year. So funds can come dedicated out of that.
Okay.
Item number six, staff is seeking authorization for the city of Frankfurt to enter in MOUs with DFI for community events in 2023. This will be for the Downtown Derby Celebration and for the Summer Concert Series. Item number seven, staff is requesting approval of a revised maintenance agreement with Colin Jones for the maintenance of this, of the old city-owned landfill. Staff has been checking on the site monthly since the approval last September of this agreement and are satisfied with the maintenance and upkeep that's being conducted. Mr. Jones merely wanted to have one change to ensure that he would only continue working for three months without payment, but we've always paid our bills on time. Item number eight, staff is requesting Board of Commissioners approval for a contract with Dr. Casey Lawson to serve as the Associate Medical Director of the Frankfurt Fire and Emergency Medical Services Teaching Education Institute in the amount of $1,000 per month. This is a requirement to continue our accreditation of our EMS classes. Item number nine, staff is also requesting approval to accept a bid by excellence for the purchase of a 2024 Type One ambulance in the amount of $347,000 or $347,677,000. And also accept a quote from Stryker in the amount of $57,255 for a PowerPro stretcher and all components for installation. The PowerPro stretcher will be outfitted to the ambulance. And due to the long lead time to build the ambulance and stretcher, we are requesting approval now. This was brought up, you all may recall, last year with Chief Briscoe last November where support was given to advance this early bid. The ambulance will likely not be delivered until July 2024. Item number 10, lease agreement, staff is seeking approval of lease agreement on property located at 602 Shank Lane, which was purchased by the city in November 2020 in order to build a new sewer pump station. This is a rental agreement for tenants living in the house on the property. Item number 11, staff is requesting approval to enter in a contract with Bluegrass Community Action Partnerships to provide non-emergency medical transport services for Medicaid patients in Franklin County. As you may recall, Jennifer Hall, our Transit Superintendent, presented information to the Board of Commissioners in the January ninth work session outlining the potential benefits or the benefits for partnering with Bluegrass BG Cap to provide these services. The cost to hire two additional transit drivers just for the remaining part of the year, it's approximately about $49,000. And that will have to have a budget amendment on it. And then we will budget for these two new drivers for the following year. And these costs will be covered by the fees that we will be able to, that we will be collecting to provide this service. Again, I want to thank Jennifer Hall, our Transit Superintendent, for doing the research and due diligence for bringing this innovative idea to the city that will result in increased revenue. Item number 12, staff is seeking Board of Commissioners approval for the Parks Department to accept a bid and enter an agreement with Omni Contracting for the demolition of the former community pool locker room and admissions area at East Frankfurt Park for $25,820. This was a part of the one-time expenditures that the BOC approved last year. It was important action to take for the city to implement and activate the adopted Parks Master Plan. Item number 13, our personal actions. We are accepting the appointment of Timmy Bishop in the Solid Waste Department on March 1st, 2023 as a Public Works Tech. We're also accepting the appointment of Justin Bowler in the Solid Waste Department on March 14th, 2023 as a Public Works Tech. We're also accepting the promotion of Johnny Carpenter in the Fire and EMS Department on February 28th, 2023, promotion from Fire Captain to Assistant Fire Chief. We're also accepting the resignation of Dustin Graybill in the Public Works and Streets on February 17th, 2023 as a Senior Public Works Tech and authorized payout of accrued leave. We're accepting the resignation of Scott Matola in the Fire and EMS Department on February 20th, 2023 as a firefighter. And also accepting the termination of Michael Oller in the Sewer Department on February 20th, 2023 as a plant operator.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, any discussion on the consent calendar?
I have one thing. In regards to DFI, we are just approving those two. I'm sorry, I was looking at the side of the mayor's space. We're only approving in-kind donations for Derby and Concert Series. Will this, I guess, come back before us on what they're going to do with candlelight since that's one of their?
Correct, this is what they submitted to ask for the.
This right here is just as of right now.
Yeah, this is as of right now.
Thank you. That's all I have, ma'am.
Commissioner Unger.
So in the Derby MOU, there was mention, and if we need to move this, to discuss it, do we need to?
Generally, if there's more questions, if you'd like to remove it, sorry, I just put a mint in my mouth.
Sorry.
If you want to remove it to action items, we can, and you could have a fuller discussion.
Okay. Would you like to move it?
You want to take this out?
Second.
All right, the motion to move this number?
Number six.
Number six to the action items. We'll consider that first in the action items. And we have a second on that. Commissioner May?
Aye, second, I'm sorry.
All right, Commissioner Unger is the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Thank you.
So, okay, now we'll go back. We, well, sorry, we had a motion on the floor for the consent calendar. So we need to back that up.
I had a second.
In a second. So we need to go back and, let's get that out of the way first, so.
Yeah.
Do we need to remove the, we need to amend that motion or rescind that motion, don't we?
I'll move to amend the motion to.
Rescind it, rescind that motion.
We can rescind that motion if that is the cleaner way to do it. We can rescind that motion and I'll, I'll move to rescind that motion and begin.
I have a second then.
Second. All those in favor to rescind the motion to approve the consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries.
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
Now, now we need to go back and, we need to.
Yeah.
It's been struck.
Moved to.
Move, second.
Now, we've already struck the, okay.
Yes.
I should approve the consent calendar.
Yes.
Commissioner May, you have a second.
Sorry.
Commissioner.
Commissioner Unger.
Unger, second.
Second.
Ask the clerk to call for a vote.
Commissioner Thompson?
Aye.
What?
Yeah, yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes, and thank you for.
Commissioner Walbridge?
Yes.
All the motions.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Yes, and consent calendar is adopted. And before we get to action items, we have a board appointment. And this is the Civil Service Board for Police and Fire. It's the appointment of Sean Caldwell, who is replacing Kevin Mason. And this is a term that is expiring February 28th, 2026.
Does this need, does this need a motion approval?
Second.
I would, I would move and I would also proudly move, I think this is a great appointment.
All right, motion by Commissioner Thompson, second. Commissioner Unger, any other discussion on this one? Okay, ask the clerk to call for a vote.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner Walbridge?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Mayor Wickers?
Yes, and in that motion carries. Congratulations, Sean. And now, action items. We'll start with number six.
DFI.
DFI events MOU. We've already had a discussion.
Can I get us started?
Yes, what kind of question?
That's really not a big question. But I did have someone reach out to me about the live stream truck that was there last Derby. And I noticed it was in the MOU, but I was told that it might not happen this Derby. So I was just wondering the status on that, if, if that was going to happen for Derby.
Depends on sponsorship, so if we get enough to pay for the truck.
Okay, so we're still working on potentially having it?
Yeah, that's our goal.
Okay, well, that's great.
Do you want, you want to tell us what the need is financially for that, to be able to make that happen?
Uh, last year, the truck.
You're welcome to come up and.
Sorry.
To the podium. Since you're here. Thanks for coming too.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Hi, last year, the truck was $2,500.
And for those that don't know, in town, what was the, what, what did it provide?
Uh, it broadcasts the Derby live. And it's a huge truck with a live screen on it. We had it up for about six hours during the day.
Is that any other questions?
No.
That was it.
Great.
Thank you.
She was like, oh, no.
Consider a motion.
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Unger.
Second.
And second, Commissioner Unger. Any other discussion? If none, we'll ask our clerk to call for a vote.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner Walbridge?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Mayor Wickers?
Yes, and that motion carries. A normal action, second reading.
Okay, we have several ordinances this evening. The first is an ordinance to amend the City of Frankfurt's Code of Ordinances, Chapter 152, by amending the City of Frankfurt's zoning regulations, Article 7, Planting Manual. And I think you all know this ordinance had its first reading on January 23rd, 2023, and by summary, this ordinance amends the City's zoning ordinance, Article 7, Planting Manual, to update the list of acceptable and unacceptable plant species allowed to be used in development landscape plans.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion, Commissioner Waters, second, Commissioner May, is there any discussion on this?
Is this on, is this online at this point, the proposed ordinance?
We actually don't, until it's actually approved, we don't publish it until then.
Thank you.
It's going to go in the newspaper, too, before it gets...
Okay, and any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask clerk to call for a vote.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner Waldrich?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Yes, and that motion carries.
And then by title, an ordinance amending Section 40.23 of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances related to police department promotions. This ordinance had its first reading on January 23rd, 2023. And in summary, this ordinance amends Section 40.23 of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances related to police department promotions to reference the Police Department's Police and Procedure 202.01, which establishes standards for an administration of the promotional testing, appointment of the applicants, and review of the appointment for a probationary period. Require that changes to the policy shall be reviewed by the City Manager, City Attorney, and/or Human Resources Director as necessary, and delete the remaining provisions governing promotional requirements as these are now established by the policy.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes.
Excuse me for asking perhaps a silly question, but under the new ordinance and the policies and procedure, and based upon the statutory language of the makeup of this type of government, is it standard policy that the City Manager, City Attorney, and Human Resource Director be the ones to review policy? Or is that something that should be brought to the commission per policy change? And I'm simply asking, that may be a Rob, Mr. Moore question more than anything.
In my experience, certainly the City Commission can have the City Manager, City Attorney, and/or Human Resources Director review the policy, but then that would come back before you, once they review it, and determine what tweaks, if any, are necessary to the policy, so you all would have the last say.
So, what this does also, Commissioner Thompson, is that a lot of our ordinances are just really prescriptive, and it's very difficult when you want to make changes. So what this allows is that if we meet with Chief Bowman, or if there's changes to the policy, we agree to those policies, refer back to the procedures, and then it comes back. So instead of doing the two-step process of amending an ordinance, there are a series of policies that the Police Department has that will allow that to come forward and then to bring it back.
Great. I just wanted to make sure that, that that, that there was some type of voice that we were able to have on that, so.
We'll have a final second. Any other discussion or questions? Clerk, can we call for a vote, please?
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner Waldrich?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Yes, and motion carries.
And then by ordinance, by title, an ordinance amending Chapter 72 of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances regarding parking regulations. And this ordinance had its first reading on February 13th, 2023. By summary, this ordinance amends Chapter 72 of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances related to parking, two, one, reference the KYTC Functional Classification Act rather than the Frankfurt Comprehensive Plan, two, change the minimum time limit for parking certain oversized vehicles from six hours to two hours upon obtaining a special permit, three, update the RAB to provide the city parking operator with authority over parking-related actions and enforcement, four, update the requirements for impoundment to reference the applicable state law requirements, five, incorporate by reference the Downtown Parking Manual, which shall contain most city parking regulations, six, delete requirements related to two-hour parking and jury duty parking, and instead refer to the Downtown Parking Manual, seven, clarify that loading/unloading locations will be established by the City Manager, and eight, update the appeals process.
I know there's been several emails going back and forth, and several comments in regards to our businesses downtown being concerned, as well as residents and those living in that area, and trying to keep up with all of the emails that have come through and different people with different questions. You know, I think we finally got down to the bottom of it, that this is not a, a two-hour minimum for the full day.
Correct.
So we've gotten down to that of understanding that it is not two hours for the whole day, that it's just two hours in that parking space. If you move somewhere else, you know, and then that's another two hours that you, it starts all back over. So we've gotten that clear, and I think my only other thing is Saturdays, because the last time that this came out, I just wanted to make sure. So Saturdays, I've heard from several vendors downtown and business owners that they would really like to lift this off for Saturdays, because the parking issue is in between Monday and Friday versus the weekends, and they would like to see that this is lifted or amended not to include Saturday enforcement. Is that something that we can amend later? Is that something we can look into and maybe ask the business owners as a whole on if they would like to move that? Because we don't have a whole lot of congestion in downtown on Saturdays. Is there, that we can take that in opinion, I've talked to at least three, three people, that we can maybe get that lifted for Saturday, instead of it being enforced on Saturdays for our community?
Well, I see this, and I know Eric Cockley is here. One of the reasons why we did this Monday through Saturday, it actually is to support businesses downtown, so that you see people coming and going. And I think we offer enough places where if people want to park all day, you can park all day on Lewis Street, you can park all day in our parking garage. We want to try, if people are going to stay for a long time, we want to try to direct them in certain areas so that our core area of Broadway, St. Clair, and Main Street remain vibrant and moving. If this is something that the, it's the will of the Board of Commissioners to pursue, then by all means, we can have a discussion about it and refer and change the parking manual later. What I hope is that, in our conversations internally, is that, we've told others and several business people who approached this, is let's give this a chance, there is a lot of thought. We had a parking advisory committee, and give this a chance to make it work. If it's not working, one of the great things is, is developing this parking manual, it won't be so difficult to make changes, you know, through ordinance. We can make changes and bring them back to you. But I would hope that we can pass this as is, give it a chance to see if it would work. And if it does create, if it creates more problems than it solves, then we can certainly revisit it in the future.
And that's what I was hoping, that we, you know, we've already made it to the second reading, and we've made those changes, and we've had a lot of discussion with business owners that that's what we can do, move forward and see what that looks like for Saturday, because it seems Saturday was a focus day. And then we can just come back and change that one day and amend it later, and change that in the book if we want to take away Saturday enforcement, so.
And what's the process to change the parking manual? Whenever, something like this, any change like this that we want to, you know, if something's not working or just doesn't make sense, six months from now, how are we going to update the parking manual?
Essentially, what we do is call a meeting of that parking advisory group and say, hey, we've heard this concern from businesses, or the Board of Commissioners has heard, and they want us to look at making this change or that change, and we would go back to that parking advisory group, talk with them about it, make whatever proposed changes, and then that gets reviewed by the City Manager to approve it, and we would then share whatever we came up with with you all. So, but as Laura said, the whole idea is that we can be a little more nimble and, and change things if we run into, you know, things that change or aren't working.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
All right, any other discussion or questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion, Commissioner, I mean, we have a motion, Commissioner Unger, motion to approve.
Second.
Second, Commissioner May, and I'll ask our clerk to call for a vote.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner Waldrich?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Yes, and that motion carries, leading us to action item number four.
Thank you. Um, I want to thank Penny Peebler for all her hard work in bringing many new initiatives and developments to the city, including the paddocks, the Broadway Bridge, Interapt, among many others, and I look forward to her continued work in the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion, Commissioner Unger, second, Commissioner May, is there any discussion on this? For the whole strategic initiatives contract, Commissioner...
Can we, can we amend this and make like a 10-year, like, contract, or she has to stick around with it, if she likes it or not?
Choking, choking.
Let's wrap that in here.
Yeah, just, just noted in there.
Any other... Yes, Commissioner May?
I just want to speak from the value of having the privilege to be in this chair and seeing the work that Ms. Peebler has done for the community and the importance of that position. One of the things I've heard a lot from this seat is that we have a lot of plans out there, and we don't always move forward with them. And one of the great things that I have seen Ms. Peebler be able to do in her position is take those plans and take the ideas and bring them together in a way that moves us forward. We talk a lot about how we're not always having to reinvent the wheel, and we look at other communities for inspiration, but we are unique in our, in our opportunities here, and the approach is unique, and we need somebody with a unique vision who also has, embodies the home and the soul of Frankfurt, which you and your family do, of course. And I just believe truly that the goals that we have on the wall that you, we've all created and participated in are moving forward because of this role. And you happen to be in that role, and I think you're the perfect person for it. And I'm very, very happy to have had the opportunity to have been working with you and look forward to the rest of it.
If I could, in, in all seriousness, this time, I, I will say that I've had several people over the last few weeks, and even since this commission has been sworn in, say, you know, what, what's happening, you know, everybody says we have lots of plans, but we don't see anything happening. And first of all, things, you know, Rome wasn't built in a day. But the second thing is, the breakneck speed at which people are going to see growth in the next four to six months is going to be quite amazing. And the coalescing of all of those plans into one larger plan was only possible through someone with, who's able to think that big. And some of us think we can think big, but then we're, we're shown people that can think bigger. And Ms. Peebler is not only a friend, but she is an amazing consultant for this community. And I honestly believe that when people look back five, 10 years from now, they're going to look at the hiring of Ms. Peebler as one of the turning points of the community.
Yeah, I'll just say, yeah, it's, you're a great compliment to our City Manager, and I think it's a good team that you all working together. I don't know how, you know, with, with what we're trying to do and the ideas that we have, of course, we would like to do more, I know. But we can only do some, you know, we have to have the resources to do that, so we have to get the extra help, the special forces, as you, as you said, so. Now, thanks for that, and supporting our City Manager in getting these things across the finish line soon. Any other discussion or questions? If not, clerk, will you call for a vote, please?
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner Waldrich?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Yes, and that motion carries, and action item number five.
Staff is seeking approval for the city to become a monetary sponsor of the International Jazz Festival event set for April 29th, 2023. As you all know, Dr. McCutcheon was here at the work session, presented the results from last year's successful event and plans for this year. And I think this is a wonderful event, and it's been a key part of our strategic plan in implementing our idea values of inclusivity, diversity, equity, and access. So the sponsorship would be for $2,500.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Last year's event was spectacular, everyone said so. Look forward to it again this year.
Yeah.
And ask our clerk to call for a vote.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner Waldrich?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Yes, and that motion carries, action item number six.
Staff would like to request authorization to apply for the Transportation Alternative Program funding for the implementation of a trail to connect the Home Street Corridor with downtown Frankfurt, the Thurbera Trail, Kentucky State University, and East Main Street. Representatives from Walkby Frankfurt approached the city in January 2023 to inquire about installing a trail to connect the aforementioned areas. The local match would be $70,000, and we're requesting from the state is $350,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion, Commissioner Waldrich, second, Commissioner Unger. Any discussion, Commissioner Unger?
Um, I would just like to thank Rebecca and staff for working with Walkby Frankfurt, a very passionate group who wants to see connectivity and trails and pedestrian safety continue to improve. So I think this is great to connect to, potentially connect a future trail to Thurbera Trail and downtown and the Home Street Corridor, so, fully supportive, thank you.
Commissioner Waldrich?
And I just would like to say I fully support, too, and I appreciate you guys continuing to push this forward. We take steps forward, but we're really moving forward this time with this. It was at the top of the list of Walkby Frankfurt. I met with Brent Swiggerd a couple of times and a couple of others, and I'm just glad we're able to check one of these off that was at the top of the list, so I'm super excited about that connectivity.
Thanks for always having something ready to go, whenever opportunity comes up for grant, let's have something ready to talk for.
Yep.
Any other discussion? If not, ask the clerk to call for a vote.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner Waldrich?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Yes, and that motion carries, action item number seven.
Staff is requesting authorization for the Police Department to surplus outdated firearms that are no longer in use and trade these firearms to Easter Police Supply for a store credit of $4,990.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion on the surplus? None? Clerk, will you call for a vote, please?
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Unger?
Yes.
Mr. Waldrich?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Yes, and that motion carries, action item number eight.
Staff is requesting approval from the Board of Commissioners of an order to surplus shop equipment that is no longer used or usable. The public works, the maintenance garage has equipment that is no longer in use due to age and condition and would like to surplus it.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Waters, second, Commissioner Unger, any discussion on this surplus? None? All right, clerk, will you please call for a vote, please?
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner Waldrich?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Yes, and that motion carries, and action item number nine.
A resolution opposing the passage of Senate Bill 50 and House Bill 50 relating to partisan local elections.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Thompson? Is there any discussion on this?
No discuss, I just, I appreciate you guys being in one accord on this. I think that across Kentucky, we all need to support this resolution, hopefully across many cities, to move this forward, so this does not move forward in, in approval, and I think they're leaning more towards school boards. So I think we just need to protect our local taxpayers' money and local governments. We can handle this on the local government as well as on the school level, so thank you.
We have the ability to do that now, but most communities, almost all the communities choose not to.
Correct, for a reason. Thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, I'll ask our clerk to call for a vote.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner Waldrich?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Yes, and that resolution passes. All right, before we move on to executive session, do we have any other, yes? All right, uh, before we move on to executive session, do we have any other, yes, other business, Commissioner Walters?
Um, I have a couple, so I, everyone has a packet here for the Martin Luther King Junior State Commission, um, I was appointed by, um, Governor Beshear to this commission, um, and this is gonna, um, we're working with Kentucky State University, um, in the colleges across the state for an oratorical, and this is what I brought up, um, for us to support through our Town Gown Initiative, and Town Gown Line Item, and it was going to be for a one thousand dollar donation to support this, um, event that will take place at Kentucky State University, the first page you have, um, in what we're trying to do, the time, the speeches, the first, second, and third place prizes, as well as the donations, and the very back is the eligibility, how to enter, competition theme and speeches, and the awards, so I want you all to have a hard copy of this, so you're aware, um, so that che, that check can be processed hopefully this week, to go into those funds, um, over into, um, that fund will be over in the KSU Foundation, so I wanted to, even though you said you wanted to support, I wanted to give you a hard copy of that, and, uh, the city manager also requested that for purposes of getting a check, so that was my first item. Um, the second item, I'm continuing to work on, um, the Crown Act, I'm working with, um, Representative George Brown on that, um, it was brought up, um, a couple of years, about a year or so ago, when we were looking for a diversity person, I know that, um, Commissioner Unger brought it up as well, the same night that, um, I was speaking on that as well, so we both had two things going on at once, which was great, so I'm looking into getting this, so we can bring, uh, a copy to get it passed here, uh, my goal is for the City of Frankfurt to lead Kentucky, there's already two cities that have already approved it, which is Covington and Louisville, um, and so I would like to, um, continue to move forward to work with Kentucky State University, as well as work with our commission, and getting it proven Frankfurt, and trying to lead the whole state, and getting all cities done. Right now, it's supposed to be, I believe, on the Senate floor, um, on March first, and we just got word today that there's going to be a march in, in response of that, from a group out of Louisville, Kentucky, um, that will be coming down, um, and working with Kentucky State University, to do a march in support of that, and what the Crown Act is, is basically support of, uh, no discrimination against hair, and the way that one wears their hair, or, um, one that grows, and so, uh, the African-American hair, uh, can grow in many different forms, and so, um, there's been firings in the world, in different states, due to the hair, um, that we are given, uh, at birth, and so this will keep from that discrimination to happen across the board, for anyone that wants to wear their hair, uh, in the way that they, um, are born with, or the way that they choose, and so I would like us to continue to be that forefront, and hopefully, we will get it passed in Kentucky, and if not, it will come back to the floor again in January, uh, to be passed, but I would like the City of Frankfurt, once again, to lead that charge, uh, with Louisville and Covington, to cover all of Kentucky, so, and I think that it means a lot, having an HBCU right here in our city as well.
If I may follow up, I know that there's two already in the support to make, to ensure it's the will of the board, so we just need one more who would like us to bring it forward, um, in a timeframe, and I can follow up with you all afterwards.
Okay.
Yes, could I have someone else support this, so we can move forward, because I'm already working on a draft, so, um, and then, uh, once that draft gets done, um, we'll support, we'll send it out, and discuss that, and bring it back for a vote, so we can have a, maybe a signing or a resolution also to go with that, so we can show support with the governor's office, I think so. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's my item.
Any other business? None? I'm returning a motion to go into executive session.
Mayor, I make a motion to go into executive session for KRS six one dot eight one zero, subsection one C, litigation related to Kyle Thompson, and claims brought against the city, action may be taken in open session.
Second.
Okay, motion, and a second to go into executive session, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unopposed. Thank you all for coming.
Yes.
Yes.
We are now back in open session, and no action will be taken by the board at this time.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Second.
Now, motion to adjourn in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we'll see you next time.
Good meeting, guys.